Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilman Rob Donovan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we worship and stand, one nation under God, in the heavens and on earth. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Donavich.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so we do have some special recognition, well, it's a special recognition and a tribute. We have Natalie Bader with us. If you'd like to make your way up to the podium, I promise, you only got to, I asked her before, I said, "Do you want to give a speech?" She goes, "I'm just going to tell us a little bit about it." But yeah, right here, so we're going to, I'm going to tell your story and feel free to add to it.
All right.
So Natalie is AKA Ms. Livonia right now, and she is going to be competing in a pretty big competition in Orlando, Florida, I believe, right?
Yep.
When is that?
It's going to be the week of Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So I will sadly not be here in Michigan, but I will be enjoying the weather down in Florida.
All right, so we do have some special recognition.
And hopefully everything will go good.
Special recognition and a tribute. Hey, Frank, if you can hear us, we do have the echo back.
We have a three-second delay.
Three-second delay. Hang on. We can have fun with it.
He's not talking to himself.
Okay, thanks, Frank. All right, but no, it's a huge deal, and it looks like you've placed a few times, and then, right now, if I'm right, you're going to Schoolcraft.
Yes, I am.
So full scholar, or a scholarship to Schoolcraft, right? And where did you go to high school?
I went to Livonia Stevenson.
All right, we won't hold it against you, that's fine. But right now, what we'd like to do, City Council, we're going to present you with this incredible commendation, and if it's cool, we can get a picture with you, and then everybody here is going to give you the biggest round of applause.
All right.
Then after you win, Ms. America, you're going to come back here and remember all your friends from Livonia. Is that fair?
Yes, thank you so much.
Would you like to add anything?
No, I just want to say thank you so much, and this is a very big honor.
That is awesome. It is our pleasure to do so. So let's bring Natalie up, get a quick picture, and then wish her the best.
It's right, no, no, I'm fine.
Sarah?
We got to run it, just in case, you know, you had to run.
Mr. President.
Just a second.
Use it as a compliment.
I graduated from the U.S.
Which chair?
The one you got on Saturday.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if it's okay, I think you forgot to mention that Mr. GQ of the Year is Jim Jolly.
Well, he gets that every year. I don't even think that's news.
He's a GQ model.
He is a GQ model.
I saw you in the magazine, Jim Jolly.
Yeah.
The whole audition for you. He's our City Council model.
It's kind of like when someone wins it every year, it's just not even fun anymore, but.
Now I understand why Frank had us on a three-second delay.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, that was, that was on purpose. All right.
It was good.
All right, so everybody, welcome.
We're in our 2003rd era of the regular, welcome to the 2003rd Regular Meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on, believe it or not, Wednesday, November 6th, the day after Election Day 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Donavich?
Here.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
Vice President Tashnik?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here.
And we show all members of Council here. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting that City Council held on October 7th, 2024. Counsel?
So moved.
Motion maker is Vice President, support from Morgan. Any comments from the audience on the minutes? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Council, or President McCullough?
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. Jumping right into audience communication, the Council has set aside 30 minutes for audience communication for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, please make your way to the podium, and you have three minutes. I think that's the VAC.
I've never heard it here.
Good evening, sir, how are you?
Yes, sir.
We got, we got Councilwoman Toy here this time.
Repeat that?
We got Councilwoman Toy in the audience right now.
Yes.
She's here.
Yes.
I'm here, I think I'm here.
My name is Glenn, G-L-E-N-N, Moon, M-O-O-N. I continue to reside at 34461 Wood Street in Livonia. And I just wanted, last week I mentioned Ms. Toy, and I want to mention her today also as well because I like her a lot.
Thank you.
And one of the reasons I like her a lot is because she likes to remind me that my dad, who was a Livonia public school teacher from 1956 to 1986, is now deceased, 2016, taught her how to play the violin.
You did?
And I also want to, also want to mention that there's another reason, too. This is, this photo, I don't know where the camera is, maybe you can see it, maybe you can't, this photo is from 2019, and then this Mrs., this is Ms. Toy sitting at a Valentine's Day lunch at Senior Center with my mom, who became deceased on April 4th this year at 94 years old, so.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. And also, actually, there's one other reason, is it, last, two weeks ago, I spoke prayer to glory of God in the name of Jesus Christ here, and I had to say my own amen. And in fact, five years ago, when I spoke glory to God in the name of Jesus prayer, Ms. Toy was kind enough as president to end my prayer with amen. So you're three for three tonight.
Geez. First time ever.
Okay, so I'm, and Mr. President, if you could tell me when I have 30 seconds left because I want to close with prayer?
You got it.
Okay. I have my modern communication miracle phone here with me right now, and what we're going to do is real quick is with as much, with the little time that we have, we are going to figure out just a way to start finding out, who is this Glenn Moon guy? Because I know that, like I said last week, there might be one or two of you in here who may have never heard of me. And so here's, with these modern communication miracles, what we're going to do is, I got my Facebook up right here, very simple, right? Everybody knows Facebook. I've been on Facebook since 2009, 15 years. And if you go, go to Facebook and you type in the words, "Moon Government," M-O-O-N-G-O-V-E-R-N-M-E-N-T, Moon Government, that would be a really good way to start.
Mr. Moon, you are in 30 seconds.
30 seconds, okay, so, well, all right.
Amen.
I'll come back next time, and we'll get further than Moon Government. We can't seem to get beyond Moon Government, can we? That we were here last week. Lord God in the name of Jesus, we, United States of America, pray. We repent, confess sin, ask, please forgive our unfaith, disbelief. Deliver us to glory of God in the name of Jesus Christ. Vote Trump, United States of America, President, 2024. Amen.
Mr. Moon, that's time.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
And you also as well.
Good evening, my name is Blair Bryson. I live at Valleywood Condominiums, 29491 Bobridge. Been a resident for Livonia for over 22 years, and so we thank you for the recent roadwork. We finally got in the new road, but for decades, there was an issue of even acknowledging who owned the road, whether it was us or the city, and the trees on each side of the road, on the four lawns. And so we found out recently through our maintenance man, who used to work for DPW, he knew somebody, it took them two months to find out, that the road in those trees belonged to Livonia. But for decades, we were paying, which we still do pay for the, pay for the snow work for the road in the wintertime, we're still paying for that. We've been paying for, for all the tree maintenance and trimming, or with limbs fall, hiring companies to clear them, and doing all the spray work. For decades now, the condo's been there for about over 50-some years, a condo for over 40 years, and so we're kind of struggling now that they acknowledge me. They keep promising us that we'll get the trees trimmed, but there's a lot of bad limbs up there. Because once we found out that wasn't our trees, we decided not to spend that money because it'd be thousands of dollars, but sometimes they fall, and some of them, even the smaller ones, can be that big around, and they're dangerous. And the smaller ones, we, like Maintenance Chris and Carol, we kind of make sure they're disposed of and cut up. But really, you know, so it takes a lot of work for us, and it's been kind of difficult. And one, one message on Chris's phone was about, well, we got 40,000 trees and take care of them every few years, and I kind of think in 50-some years, maybe we got a free trim coming. But anyway, that's kind of the thing, so we've really invested a lot in that, before we found out that those are really the city's trees. And some of them lead close to the buildings, a couple times we had big limbs come down, cover half the street, and finally, after he found out that the Livonia owns them, then that time or two, they actually came out, cleaned them up, but before that, we were paying for that. It takes a lot of work for us for the smaller stuff to, you know, kind of keep it clear, but we're kind of worried about somebody getting hurt with those trees or half, because some of the limbs hang over, out over some of our parking and toward the buildings if something comes down on that. So that's what our concerns is, is can we get somebody to come out and check, because we've been getting the same promise, starting last August, they said later in the year, then in the spring, then right before the pavement was going to be put in, and then they said after, now they're telling us next year. And so, but really, there's some bad stuff that needs to be cleaned up, and we don't want anybody hurt.
No, I appreciate that, and then, is there a card on that dais right there? Is there like a business card?
Oh, sure.
Grab that.
Oh, wait a minute, it says, please?
Does that say City Council on it?
Oh, no, that's the one, it just says about, please speak closely to the mic.
If you, if you're going to be here after the regular meeting, we do have some cards on this table, that's going to get you to Sarah, who's our office manager. Feel free to give her a shout tomorrow and get all the information, we'll make sure we get it to the right department.
Oh, okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and have a blessed day.
I appreciate it. You, too. Anybody else for audience communication? Seeing none, I'm going to jump right into Council communication. I'm just going to just note that we do have new data on items 10, 11, 13, and 14. Counsel?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Toy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's with great sadness that, and most of us probably know this, but in case, Sister Mary Renetta has passed away. She was a pillar in our great city for many, many years. Her role as President of St. Mary's Hospital, she was instrumental in many of the renovations there and additions and innovative projects for the good of the hospital. She used her keen intelligence and determination in a never-failing wit, she had a great wit, by the way, as many of you know, to accomplish goals for the good of the community and to further the goals of the Phoenician Sisters. And she does have a viewing starting this Wednesday at the Phoenician Convat at 36800 Schoolcraft Road in Livonia, of course, on the 24th, that's Wednesday, from 3:30 PM until 8:00 PM, with a rosary and sharing of memories at 7 o'clock. The funeral mass will convene on Thursday at 11:00 AM, gathering at 10:00 AM, followed by prayers at 10:30 AM. So I just wanted to make sure we recognize Sister, she, as was said, she did a lot of great things, had a lot of meetings with her. I know when our mayor was on the council, we'd go over and have dinner with them, and they'd tell us all the wonderful things that St. Mary's and the Phoenician Sisters were doing on their grounds, and we're so fortunate in our city to have the sisters here, and their numbers are dwindling a little bit, but we just respect them and honor them so much. And at one time, they used to have 600 votes, the same way, and so many of us, you know, did pay attention to some of that as well, so, you know, Sister would be greatly missed. She was a true leader, and with that sense of humor and things, if I may ask for a few moments of silence, Mr. President, that would be appreciated, thank you. Thank you, God bless her.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toy. Anything else from Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to change it to a little bit of a lighter note. I have a family member having a special milestone birthday this Thursday, October 24th. My aunt, Mary Ann Farkas, longtime Livonia resident, they've been residents for over 50 years, is a, well, she'll probably kill me, but she's celebrating her 80th birthday this week, and I just wanted to give her a shout out because she's always been a proud member of Livonia, loves Livonia, probably watching right now, and if she's not, her friends are, so we'll be able to razz her a little bit about it, so just wanted to say happy birthday, Aunt Mary Ann.
Counsel, anybody else? Mr. Martin, we did do, we closed audience communication?
Yes, I know we did, and I'm just purring myself for the consent agenda.
You got it, I figured you did.
I just, I didn't want to jump the gun.
You're totally fine. Anything else from Council? Councilman Donavich?
Thanks, Mr. President. I know with fall season arriving, there is some information about leaf pickup. The city of Livonia recently posted some information on their city website and our Facebook page, so if you have questions about the leaf pickup program, go to our websites and/or our Facebook page, and there's some really great information on there. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I am now going to move on to reports from the mayor and other, other city officials. We do have communication from the Department of Finance, dated October 1st. It's the departmental purchase report for the month ending September 30th, 2024. This is a receive and file, and with that, I'm going to hand the floor over to our city clerk to give some updates.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. I just wanted to point out that we're 15 days away from a very big election. As you all know, it will be Tuesday, November 5th. In anticipation of that, our office has extended our hours. We will be open 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday of this week, and Monday through Friday of next week. We will also be open this Saturday from 9:00 to 5:00 for election matters only, and then, as always, we are open the Saturday before the election from 7:30 to 3:30. I wanted to remind residents that after today, if you're not registered to vote, you need to come into our office and do it in person with your photo ID in order to be eligible to vote in November. Our early voting site, many people have heard, we have one location, so all 44 precincts can vote at that location. The address is 10800 Farmington Road, which is just south of Plymouth Road, and it's located in the Livonia Housing Commission office. Early voting will function just like a precinct, where your ballots are run through a tabulator. There are no results, everything is paused until the end, and then on election night at 8:00 PM, those tabulators are brought here to the auditorium where they are opened up and the results are run, here, and it's open to the public. So absentee ballots have been a big issue this year, they're climbing in numbers. We're issuing close to 150 ballots every day, and some days higher, so they're going out in the mail on a daily basis now, we're no longer doing bulk mailings. The number so far issued, we're at 28,124 absentee ballots. Our return rate is at 45.7%, which means we have 12,851 ballots have been returned. The last day, if you've already voted your absentee ballot, for you to spoil it, will be this Friday. If you have not received your ballot and want to spoil it, you can do so until next Friday. And then, of course, Election Day. On Election Day, all 44 voting precincts will be open. The polls open at 7:00 AM and they close at 8:00 PM, and I wanted to send a special thank you to my office and everyone who has helped us. My staff has worked tirelessly already, many days off without, or many days without a day off, and they will continue to do so through the election. It's a very busy time for us, and we do expect a huge voter turnout, so we encourage everyone to vote, it's very important, and I want to thank the administration and Council for their support. This has been a very busy election cycle and a very quick turnaround from August, and we couldn't do so without everyone's help. So please encourage you to vote if you have not already done so, and if you have questions, contact the Clerk's office.
Thank you, and yeah, kudos to your staff, I mean, honestly, this is a big lift with this year.
They are phenomenal.
You know, I know we say this every single year, but as polarizing as 2024 has, you and your team do a wonderful job, keep it up, and, you know, after it's all done, get some rest. I'll hand it over to Councilwoman Toy.
If I made it to the Clerk, Madam Clerk, I've had, in recent days, a lot of people calling me with spoiled ballots. Could you, I know you touched upon it, could you explain the process? They do have to bring in that ballot, surrender it, so that they can get a new ballot, is that correct?
Right, to spoil a ballot, they must bring in the first ballot if they do in fact have it, they have to turn it in to us, they complete a form, we do check their ID, and then we can issue a new ballot while they're here.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else from Council? All right, we are going to move on to the consent agenda. Items 1 through 9 on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on October 7th, 2024, and determined to be non-controversial. Counsel, do I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Approval from Jolly?
Support.
Support from Councilwoman Budzinski. Do I have any comments from Council? Seeing none, and I'm going to go to you, Mr. Martin, the floor is yours.
Christopher Martin, President of the great state of Michigan, and this is, I'd like to talk about number three, this is the Employee Assistance Program. And at, in the UAW, we actually had, the EAP rep was also a part of health and safety. But what was very alarming when Ms. Libel spoke about this at the last council meeting was that, I'll have to forgive my rough voice this evening, but that was pertaining to 30%, greater than 30% of the employees use it, and I found that to be alarming. 30, greater than 30% use that? That's shocking. And for what that EAP representative does, this is for people with, could have a drinking problem, could have a drug problem, could have mental issues that they're having, and they need some assistance, they need to talk to somebody, they need some help or whatever. We sent guys away for 30 days to live in a facility when they had a drinking problem, and, or whatever it might have been. But that's an alarming percentage, when the citizens of Livonia have to come and deal with somebody who might be having an issue or whatever, it's really, that just, I couldn't, I couldn't even imagine it. Last, a number of years ago, when our current mayor first was elected, let me know when I got 30 seconds.
20 seconds.
Well, okay, I guess I'm not going to be able to even start nor finish this, but I will say this, though, we need to extend the time, because at some point, it was two three-minute intervals at one particular meeting, at the beginning and at the end, and as you see, we've never exceeded 30 minutes, okay, for audience communication.
That is time, so basically, just to give you a point of reference, the, these are two minutes, the three minutes are...
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yes.
So, yes, it's an item.
Hey, I'm, hey, I'm lucky to have this guy.
Well, that's right, that's, that's why he's...
Listen, I'd be up there rambling forever.
On the cover of, what did Mr. Donavich say, on the cover of something or whatever, okay?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Martin. Anything else from the audience for the consent agendas? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye, and the consent agenda passes 7 to 0. Moving on to item number 10 is unfinished business. These, this is the meetings of the committee. Item number 10 is our Finance and Budget Committee meeting of September 16th, 2024. Topic was proposed budget for the city of Livonia for the fiscal year ending November 30th, 2025, and the property tax mileage proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget. We did have a public hearing that was held on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024, and before I hand it over to Councilman Jolly, just to give you an idea, you know, we might speak on this, but the budget, there's a huge amount of process that goes through it, so while we might kind of run through some things here, just know that we had endless amounts of meetings and meetings and emails and phone calls, there's a lot that goes into it, and I want to make sure, because the administration and staff do a heck of a job putting this all together, and we do a ton of work reviewing and ensuring everything's in place, so just giving some context. Councilman Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the Finance and Budget Committee meeting took place on Monday, September 16th, here at City Hall. The members of the committee are myself as Chair, Ms. Tashnik as Vice Chair, and Mr. Donavich as a committee member. We had no committee members absent. Councilmembers Budzinski and Toy were also present, as was the mayor, Mayor Brazin, the city treasurer Nash, city clerk Miller, our city attorney, Mr. Fisher, our finance director, Mr. Lichten, excuse me, Ms. Lichtenberg, chief of staff, Mr. Varga, and city assessor, Ms. Goslin.
I'm not sure, but...
Yeah, we, the whole council may have been here, that's not what it says.
I apologize if I missed somebody.
So the meeting convened at 7:02 PM. Ms. Brazin, the mayor, provided an overview of the process with the priorities for the year ahead, and spoke about a new initiative, which was priority-based budgeting, that they were moving the city into the, going forward with budget decisions and budget cycling. Our city assessor, Ms. Goslin, provided an overview of the 2024 assessment data, including review of the taxable value increase on velorum properties and a taxable value increase on the industrial facilities tax for special act parcels. Finance Director Lichtenberg provided budget goals and a focus overview showing a budget that was balanced, with total revenue of $74,966,952, and total expenditures of $74,948,184. So you'll note that we have about a $22,000 bottom line in the black there. Public safety is approximately 63% of the budget, and we have a projected general fund balance of 24%, which represents $17.9 million. And then the budget adjourned, the budget meeting, excuse me, adjourned at 9:04 PM, and this matter will remain in committee as a standing item. The Council recommends at this time to receive and place on file the city of Livonia preliminary budget documents for fiscal year 2425 that were received on September 15th of 2024, and to receive and place on file the supplement to the preliminary budget, 24 budget year 2324, including the personnel worksheets received on September 15th of 2023. And this item will be read out on October 21st, 2024, which is tonight, and I believe we may have some motions. Mr. President?
Thank you. Counsel, I'm just going to kind of open the floor, and then, I think the mayor, mayor, would you like to speak on this, or just stand by for questions?
We need a motion.
Oh, yes. Counsel, do we have a motion?
Mr. President, I'll offer an approving motion for the budget.
We got support?
Support for sake of discussion.
All right. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And Counsel, I know you have a series of motions in order to approve the budget, but I did want to just start with some overarching remarks, because by any stretch of the imagination, this is the single biggest vote that the Council takes in any one of its given years. It is the single most important document that an administration puts before a Council, and if a community pays attention, what they begin to understand when they look at a budget is where the priorities of our community reside. So I think it probably behooves us to take just a moment to talk a little bit about some of the things that this year's budget does for Livonia residents. Council President McCullough was spot on when he said that so much of what goes into this budget begins with a process that began with all of you, sitting down with all of you in a pre-budget meeting, trying to understand and figure out what it was that was most important to you as you represent the constituents of Livonia, matching that, mirroring that with what we know we need to do in order to keep the community solvent and moving forward, meeting on a number of occasions and a lot of emails going back and forth. But tonight, what we have is an opportunity now for a budget that is currently yours to once again be voted on, come together, and become something that we all agree we're going to not only live by, but we're going to thrive by. So there are a couple things that this budget does, and I want to appreciate the fact that you brought up our priority-based budgeting methodology that was employed. So I think it probably behooves us to take just a moment to talk a little bit about some of the things that this year's budget does for Livonia residents. Council President McCullough was spot on when he said that so much of what goes into this budget begins with a process that began with all of you. Sitting down with all of you in a pre-budget meeting, trying to understand and figure out what it was that was most important to you as you represent the constituents of Livonia, matching that, mirroring that with what we know we need to do in order to keep the community solvent and moving forward, meeting on a number of occasions, and a lot of emails going back and forth. But tonight, what we have is an opportunity now for a budget that is currently yours to once again be voted on, come together, and become something that we all agree we're going to not only live by, but we're going to thrive by. So there are a couple of things that this budget does, and I want to appreciate the fact that you brought up our priority-based budgeting methodology that was employed. That's a huge change for a community, and one that I think is really going to set Livonia on a pace in order to make sure that we really are paying attention to those things that are most vital to the future of our community. Now, we just dipped our toe in the water in that methodology and this process, but as we discussed at a number of those meetings, we're going to be, over the course of the next year, year, year and two years actually, fully embracing priority-based budgeting as the methodology that we use moving forward. And I want to thank you for your support in our efforts to do that. This budget this year is also going to assure that we remain the city with the lowest tax rate in Wayne County, 13% lower than the next lowest city. And that is an extremely attractive feature to anybody who is looking to move into our city, anybody who's looking to sell their business, to sell their home in our city, anybody that's just really looking for an affordable place to live. This budget is going to maintain a fund balance of approximately 24%, which assures that Livonia is able to achieve an investment-grade general obligation bond rating, which is vital to our ability to take on some of these really big transformative projects that we've all agreed we need to take on in order to continue to move our city forward and advance the goals of Livonia Vision 21. It's always, it's also going to meet those best practices that have been established by the Government Finance Officers Association for maintaining an unrestricted general fund balance of no less than two months of general fund expenditures. This guarantees a stable and a resilient financial portfolio for the city. That is essential in businesses that want to move here, and residents that want to build their homes and families here, to understand that. And finally, it's going to tackle that $100 million deficit that was identified earlier this year when we had the Plant Moran Rio Point Facilities Condition Assessment conducted. And it pointed out that we have a lot of failure in our infrastructure currently, in our largest and our most costly public buildings. So this year's budget does everything that last year's budget did and more. It's already begins to set aside $2.4 million to pay for the debt service on the bond that we haven't even yet secured to build a new city hall. That is possibly one of the most fiscally responsible and conservative approaches that any city administration and council in the history of the city has taken, and I want to commend you for that. As we stand on the precipice of our city's 75th anniversary, this budget is going to carry our city into a future that has a stronger financial position than we've seen in perhaps the last 25 years. So I want you to know that I'm proud of the work that's been done on this budget. I'm especially excited with the work that our finance director did. This was Director Lichtenberg's first budget, and a process that went extremely smoothly. She's got an amazing support staff that really does help pull together an awful lot of work. But I also want to thank you for all the work that you did in making sure that the details in this budget really reflected the most important needs of this community. So I wish you well as you take up each one of the additional components of the budget this evening, and we stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mayor. And maybe, Mr. Fisher, just for a point of clarification, since we obviously have some, we have three items in the packet, do we have to vote on these separately?
In terms of the receiving files and the budget itself, you can vote on that as one motion.
Okay. Well, we do have the main motion, and it's basically anything in the packet. And I know that, I think Debbie was going to speak on some of the items that were added later in the budget process, should we say, or maybe not?
Amendments?
Yeah, because we just want to make sure that, I guess on the public.
So I'll just speak to the procedure, because there is a motion on the floor, and the city attorney will.
Stop, yeah.
Will nod at me or kick me if I tell you the wrong thing. I received communication that there were a couple of items that council was wishing to introduce. So I believe you have a motion for the proposed budget as it was currently submitted. If council wishes to make any changes, I believe that an amendment to that motion would need to be made and supported and voted on prior to approving the budget. And I believe there was another item that was going to be introduced by council regarding the timing of approval for the tax administration fee.
Yeah, right now, we have, in the packet, we've got three motions in here, the three items that were added. There's a motion to approve the continuation of the tax administration fee. Number two is a motion to amend the proposed budget. A says remove $60,000 from the general fund governmental affairs budget for the contractual service, and add $60,000 to the Fund 418, which is a building improvement expenditure budget. B is add $20,000 to the Fund 401 Capital Projects Budget from council initiatives related to the Noble slash Sheldon Park to come from the unexpected fund balance. So those, council, are what we have in our packet. If there's something missing, then I think we would have to have a separate motion on that.
Could you repeat the first one, I'm sorry?
The first one is motion to approve continuation of the tax administration fee.
Thank you.
So.
Mr. President? Given the explanation by Ms. Lichtenberg, I will withdraw my approving motion at this time to allow the other motions to take place. Do I have concurrence from my supporter? Thank you very much, the floor is clear.
All right, so do we have any motions? Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to make the motion to approve continuation of the tax administration fee.
Okay, do we have support?
Support.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. And the reason I'm going to make this motion right now, we actually approved this in June of 2024 to be an annual collection. And I want to amend this, because we'd like to kind of set the timing to be with our budget, and make sure that we know that that's where the budget stands, and we have that income coming in. This will not be an automatic part of the budget, but something that comes before council at budget time. And so that's what this amendment is about. You know, all of our hope is to maybe not necessarily need this administration fee in subsequent years. We already have kind of approved, or we already did approve it for 2025, but we do want it to line up with the budget year. So that's what this motion is about, and we just want to make sure that that's transparent to our residents. So that's what this would do, this motion.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any other speaking on this item? I'll go to Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate my colleague and the vice president for kind of explaining this procedural step. I'm not going to rehash the details of this specific item itself, I will not be in support only based on the fact of it's something that's important to me, that I did not support the, this proposal initially, to begin with. However, I understand what we're doing today is we're just essentially realigning it to be approved on a continuing basis, based on the calendar of the budget. So I think we need to do this. Perfect world, we would not, we would not have this, but I don't see that happening this evening. But again, just on the, on something that's important to me, I will not be in support of this, but that's no reflection necessarily on the procedural step that needs to happen this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan. Anything further from council? Anything from the audience? And, Mr. Fisher, just to make sure I'm correct here, so we're going to, we're going to vote on each of these, and then the last one, hopefully, if all goes well, would be the final budget.
Correct, so any amendments would be voted on separately, and then there will be one final vote.
Just yell at, both of you guys yell at me if I'm trending down the wrong path. But right now, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote on item number one? It's the motion to approve the continuation of the tax administration fee.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the item carries six to one. We're going to move on to, well, actually, council, open for motions. Councilwoman Buzinski.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the proposed budget to add $20,000 to the Fund 401 Capital Projects Budget for council initiatives related to Noble and Sheldon Park from the unexpected fund balance.
We have support?
I'll support that.
Now we have a number two.
Yeah, now, Mr. Fisher, do I, can we vote on A and B to be as the same? If there's two motions, if one maker of the motion, or, because right here, I've got two, but there's an A and a B.
These don't have to be considered as one motion, because they're separate items. You can vote on them separately.
Perfect, okay. So this is just for item A, or, I'm sorry, item B on here is an add the $20,000 to the Fund 401 Capital Projects Fund Budget to the, related to Noble slash Sheldon to come from the unexpected fund balance. We had support, and do we have discussion? Councilman Donovan, or the maker?
Yes, so this was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting that we held last Wednesday. It was a recommendation from Council President Brandon McCullough. This money would be used for a few things. One, to preserve the integrity of the Noble Building as it currently stands. Just to be clear to the public, the library decommissioned Noble Library. It is no longer, the building itself is no longer a library, it is city property. And a portion of these funds, we hope, will be used to preserve that building while we determine what the long-term usage of it will be, or what its future holds. In addition, part of those funds could be used for a more intensive survey of whether the building is in a condition that can be rehabilitated, or if, you know, something else needs to be done in the future additionally, you know, a planning, a long-term planning study to be done for what we can do, both with the building and also with the surrounding park area. So a lot of our residents, for many years, have made, put in a lot of work in this area, in our community. They've said it's a priority, I feel that it is a priority as well. Being on the south side of Livonia, there are barriers of the industrial zone and the freeway that cuts this five and Farmington area off, makes it, you know, less walk, bike friendly. I think we need a city service facility down there. I think it has been a signature park for our community in name only for too long, and that we need to look at reinvesting in the area. So I think this is a good first step, and I'm really hopeful that we can have it included in the budget.
Thank you, Councilwoman Buzinski, Councilman Donovan.
Thanks, Mr. President, I appreciate it. I'm really excited about this item, because I think it's going to prove what I've been saying for years now, that this building needs to be demoed. And I'm really excited that my colleague made this motion, essentially to take $20,000 at our general fund, and at the direction of Councilman, Council President McCullough, who had talked about this a lot. We've had countless hours of discussion about him believing Noble Library should stay, and I believe it should be demoed. From my understanding, this $20,000 will go to, conduct another analysis. Early in 2021, city council went down this road. We hired OHM, a very reputable company, to conduct an analysis of the building. It would be cost prohibitive to invest any more money into this building. Take you back a little bit, it's been closed since 2019. Prior to that, it was open three days a week. In 2021 timeframe, the Library Commission determined that this building should come down, it should no longer be a library. If you are a reader, you would enjoy yourself at our local library, right here, Civic Center Library. And it's quite a shame, because it should be a staple of Wayne County. Our library system should be something that everyone wants to come to, and our librarians should have the library they deserve. And we have the staff in our library, but we don't have the facility to give to them. And I would say, part of that is because we have so many of our, of our fixed dollars spread across three different libraries. So I think we need to have a come-to-Jesus moment here, and realize that we don't have enough money to have three libraries. I think it'd be great to conduct this analysis, go further down the road, and understand that we don't have the money to spend on fixing a massive building. It will take millions of dollars to fix. I think we should take those dollars and focus them at our central library, making it technologically advanced, making sure that my generation and my little brother's generation, and generations coming can go to a library that serves the needs of tomorrow, not from 1990 and so on and so forth. We have fixed dollars, and we have to spend them amongst many buildings. And I know this is a sensitive issue, but as government officials, we have to make difficult decisions. So thanks to the council president for pushing this. I think it's going to prove that it's time to spend these dollars adequately, and I'll be in support of spending $20,000 at Noble, who would think?
I got Councilwoman Buzinski, then I'll go to Councilwoman Toy.
Just for this sake, because this is such a popular issue in our community, and I don't want to create confusion among people about what the designation of this building is, as my colleague talked about it in the sense of being a library. This building is not a library. I do not expect that it would be reinstated as a library. We are talking about using this historic building as a community facility. What exactly does that look like? That is what these funds would be used to help determine. If you want to know what I would like to see the building used as, I'd like to see it used for rentable space for community groups and nonprofits in our community. I'd like to see city services being offered out of that building, you know, which would include, you know, maybe some library programming. You know, you could come and pick up your books, like we have the vest pocket at the senior center, or, you know, perhaps use some public computers, rec center classes, a yoga program. You know, there's a lot of different ways that we can have community resources available for residents who live on the south side of the city. But to be perfectly clear, the Noble Building is not a library currently. The motion we're looking to do does not lead for it to be a library again. The funds that we currently have for our library, it's, our library is funded through a millage, and it is only used for the Civic Center Library and the Sandberg Library. So just to be really clear on that issue, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm going to take a different swing at this, if you will. I'm going to look at the fact that in this budget, with the vision of the administration and those of us that have worked on the budget, we're finally doing a facility supervisor, which Councilman Kritzman asked for many years ago, when I served on this council back when. And it's a vision in the far side of this budget that we've put dollars in to finally hire somebody, so we don't have to get at this stage with this building and all the questions and all the yanks that we've, we've had over it. And, you know, Plymouth Road's a busy road. I've done business on that road for almost 50 years now. And it, it, it's a super road, I mean, as far as the traffic, and it's a state road, and all those wonderful things, but we really need to look at this real quick again, even though, you know, we did it once before, but let's give it another shot, let's look at it. And once we get this budget approved, and this facilities person on, he or she will do a terrific job, I'm sure, in evaluating a lot of our structural kinds of things around our city. So that's, that's a different twang I thought I'd bring forward. Is twang a good word? I don't know these days, I don't know.
I want to look it up, but.
Look it up, will you?
Maybe I shouldn't. Anything else from council? Any, anything from the audience on this, this, yes, Mr. Martin, two minutes.
Yes, yes, two minutes, I'll be, I'll be brief. This is an important night in history here. Young Mr. Donovan and I actually agree on something here this evening, related to Noble Library.
You should include that in the minutes tonight.
This is historic, okay? But I don't want to see one penny invested in it. I don't care if you want to have another, somebody else take another look at the building and the structure, or whatever. Here's the big thing that I've mentioned several times over the years. And it was that building, along with the condition of the other libraries that we do have, part-time and full-time libraries, is it was just the complete and total incompetence of the director of the libraries to let that get to the condition it was in. Period, end of story on that. The Library Commission, I don't know, the commissioners, I don't know if they ever went into the library and ever looked, okay? I do know this, that when the parking lot was redone here, over at the Civic Center Library here, or the Bennett Library, whichever term you might want to use, Scott Bauer didn't even know where the parking lot was at the library over there that we were resurfacing. He didn't even know. It's incredible. And he had been on council eight years, and several years prior to that, on the planning commission, didn't even know where the parking lot was for the library.
You got 30.
Thank you.
You want it, it's 30.
Well, okay, so anyway, that's. Okay. Evidently, I have exceeded my time. But, yeah, I don't want to see any, not one more penny put over there for any type of investigation of any type. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Good evening.
Good evening, Council President and council. My name is Cindy Fleming, I live on Woodring in Livonia. I'm just coming to say that Alfred Noble, the building, was designed by Gunnar Bergert. It's a mid-century building by an award-winning architect. It is one of our remaining buildings of that era in the City of Livonia, and it deserves a good look and restoration. And I really believe. And I really believe, I really appreciate you taking all the time to come out and to listen to people, because, yes, there are many, many citizens in support of this, and I appreciate it, and I hope you all support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the audience? Seeing none, I'm going to go to, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And that motion carries seven to zero. Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have another motion to amend the proposed budget, to remove $60,000 from the general fund in the governmental affairs budget for contractual services, and put that $60,000 to the Fund 418, which is our building improvement expenditure budget.
Support.
Thank you. When we were looking at this budget, it just, it didn't feel specific enough when it was in the governmental affairs budget, we didn't want to have that money not limited. The intent for this money is for our Civic Center campus, that's its intended usage. It feels better that it's with that part of the budget. So if we need those contractual services, it would, its intended usage would be for our Civic Center campus and that only. And that's why we're, I'm looking to have this moved.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Bless you.
So this has nothing to do with the government affairs position? This is something else?
Correct.
Yes.
This is just the...
There was a line item in...
This is just coming out of two different budgets, we're just moving it from one budget to another.
Correct, but it's intended use is for the Civic Center campus, so we're going to attach it to that budget, and not governmental affairs.
Very well, yep, thank you.
Anything else from council?
Point of clarification, the 14 fund can be used for any buildings within the city, not just Civic Center.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, Mr. President.
Anything from the audience on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries seven to zero. Council, going back to you for the motion maker. We still need a motion on now.
Well, it was chair.
Well, if there's anything else, if not, we would need a motion on the budget. Councilwoman Toy.
There is something else. I would like to look at, speaking of government affairs, I noticed that there's a step increase in there that concerns me, because the brackets for the, and others have brought it up to me as well. There is a, let's see, the communications person and our new city attorney, it...
Are you, yeah, just formulate, formulate a new motion.
Oh, a motion is to take a look at this, or to look at where we're going with this step.
Okay. Do we have support? Just for sake of discussion?
Support for sake of discussion.
All righty, so anyhow, I'm just not trying, what I'm trying to do is look at it, maybe it was a mistake, because what it does is it actually lifts it up from a two to a five automatically. This is not a personal thing, this is just a precedence kind of thing. I've always been used to, if you will, civil service looking at it from a standpoint of steps as they come about. The first six months are one thing, then the second six months is a bump, then the year is another bump. And, and so, others are doing that, and I thought, well, maybe this is possibly, I don't know, Deb, and maybe I should have taken time to call you today, as I got further into it, maybe it's just a mistake, maybe it was intended, I don't know, but...
Councilwoman 25, may I go to...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Fisher, do we, as council, have the ability to do anything with steps, or no?
The steps were already approved via resolution, actually, for that position. In terms of how the steps are moved through, that's either dictated by the Civil Service Commission, if it's a civil servant, or in this instance, because it's a department head, dictated by the mayor.
Mr. President?
Councilman Donavich?
I guess my follow-up question is, we still have, we still have oversight as how much money goes into that account. So if I understand, Councilwoman Toy, you're saying that that position went from a step two, or 1.5, all the way up to a five? And while, if I understand, the city attorney, we don't necessarily have jurisdiction over the department heads and their step increases, we do have authority over the budget. So if we wanted to amend that budget amount to reflect a step two, or whatever that step would be, I think that would be appropriate.
Well, whatever the feeling of the council is, as well, I wanted to point out that that was happening, and if you feel okay with that, then yes, I mean, I think I've set a...
Well, I would say, just, no, just for point of order on this, is just, I would, you know, if you have a motion to that, let's, let's put a motion forward specifically.
Can we just confirm that with the Finance Director, Ms. Lichtenberg? Can you confirm what, what is the...
So the amount that's included in the budget is three months at the current step, which is a step two, and nine months at a step five. So it, it's the maximum amount that could be allowed under the wage scale that council approved.
So we're, we're just jumping from a step two to a step five?
It would allow for it. It doesn't guarantee it, because that is up to the discretion of the mayor, but it would allow the funding for it.
Okay.
Right now, the only motion we have is to kind of look at it. So I wouldn't formally consider that a motion, council. We still have, obviously, the approval of the budget still as an addendum, or as an item on the, on this, but if we have other motions, now would be the time to do it.
Can you tell me what, through the chair, could you tell me what the step two is, and what the step five is? What is the difference?
I don't have that at my fingertips. I might have it, talk amongst yourselves.
Well, I'm sure Frank could come up with some good elevator music.
Mr. President, if I may, in the meantime, I think we have, although this is a concern that is of interest to a lot of people, I think the bigger issue tonight is passing the budget to make sure that the city maintains its operations in general, fiscally and appropriately, as was planned through the budgetary process, and the hearings and the meetings that took place. I, I don't think that this is an appropriate topic for an off-the-cuff conversation here. Ms. Lichtenberg indicated that it is currently budgeted at step two for three months, then to potentially go to a step five. To me, that lends, lends some ability for us to take a look at this later on down the road, without getting into this right now.
So with that, you know, if you have clarification, feel free.
I don't have clarification yet, because I've sent out a lot of documents to you. So I, I'm not laying my fingers on it immediately, and I don't want to misspeak. But what I will say to Councilmember Jolly's point, this does assume that whatever change would take place in steps would take place at the employee's anniversary date, which is either in February or March. So, I would be able to provide research to you at a later date, and if council wished to amend the budget, very much like you're doing this evening, you would always have that avenue available.
Councilwoman 25, may I, just to clarify, so right now, the way that the budget sits is there's three months at a step two, and then as the new fiscal hits, there's a, no, no, there's an ability. So right now, for three, for three months, it's staying step two?
Correct.
Okay, just giving that...
So the, the, the change after that three months is based on the current employee's anniversary date.
Okay. I'll go to Councilman Donavich, and then Councilwoman Toy, Councilman Jolly.
I mean, council, what I'm hearing right now is there was a, there was a immediate step increase, and the department head has that ability to do that. But I also know that this position goes back historically, and we approved this position, we approved it at a step one with a amended pay scale. And I'm hearing concerns that is resetting the tone, the precedent, for increases from step one all the way to step five, or step two all the way to step five. I'd love to see scenarios where that normally happens within City Hall. That's not with our purview, but our purview is to control money. And if, if there's discussion here, because it's never going to go back, I know there's money for the first three months, and then the next nine months, let's face, you're not going to go from a step five back down to step three, it's just never going to happen, short of some sort of crazy scenario happening, so. But again, if there's, if there is sediment for that, I mean, we can make a motion to only approve step two money, if that's the case, but that's up to council.
I'll go to Councilwoman Toy, and then Councilwoman Jolly, then Councilwoman Morgan.
Thank you, if, if I may, to our Finance Director. This helps me clarify, because it will be at the discretion eventually. It's not locked in, in other words. I just don't want to get into a big precedence of others that are following steps or within those brackets, so that we deviate from that, and it came to council, and there was other concerns on it, so that's why I brought it forward. I'm not trying to put any dirty laundry into it, or personalities, anything, I want to be clear about that. It's just, when we start talking money, everybody works for money, and I just want to be, you know, completely transparent about what we're doing here, that's all, and I, you know, and it was brought up to me, and I wasn't trying to undermine, or overmind, or any of the rest, it's just, this is a time to bring these things up, if we're going to bring them up, right, as well. This is our last chance.
The one thing that I will add, going back to the motion that was made to approve reinstating this position, and that motion predates me, but I did look that up.
Right.
And it tie-barred this position to two other deputy positions, the deputy clerk and the deputy treasurer. So they all followed the same pay scale, and they are not part of the civil service, there's, there's leeway there.
Right.
And currently, there's discretion at starting rates, the, at the step at which those deputy positions start. And I do know that both the deputy clerk and the deputy treasurer started above step one, but I do know that the motion that was made reinstating this position was a step one.
Right, right, and it's hard to compare those, because they're elected on their own, if you know what I mean, they don't fall under...
The deputies are not.
As well, they, they're appointed, correct?
They're appointed.
So they will determine, the clerk will determine hers, the treasurer determines them, yeah, no, I get that part of it. I just, I'm looking at, within the administrative structure, how we look at that, and if the mayor can do that at any time, that's great. I appreciate that. Thank you for that clarity as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toy. I'm going to go to Councilwoman Morgan.
Okay, you know, we had a, the council here had a very long discussion regarding this position in the first place, and, you know, we had, depending on what, somebody came in with their experience and, experience and so on and so forth, and we had discussed that this would start at step one. That position has only been active for probably, what, maybe six months, if that, and we're already approaching, we're already in step two?
I believe, I believe the employee has been in place for more than six months. So, it is actually currently at step one and a half.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we do an adjustment on this, the budget.
Just procedurally, I'm sorry, we already have a motion on the floor, we'd have to take care of the motion that's on the floor.
You'd have to remove your "let's talk about it" motion?
Yeah.
If that's okay with you?
It's fine, we have talked about it, thank you.
We did talk about it.
For a long, we need to talk about it.
For sake of discussion. So would you, would you be fine to remove your motion?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, that's good.
I support her.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion regarding this, that until the next fiscal budget year, that we cap this at step three, as far as funding is concerned.
Do we have support, or is there support for this? Is there a support for this motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, floor is yours again. Sorry, I was just making sure we had the supporting.
That's it, you know, we had a long discussion on this before, and I mean, if the citizens out there saw this discussion previously, this was a point of contention where we believed that this position wasn't needed in the first place, and then we were convinced by the mayor that it was, so we capped the amount and how it started, and allocated that money. If someone's going to work here for an extended period of time, I don't think it's a reach to cap that pay at step three until the next budget year. So, that's, that's where my stance is.
Thank you, Councilwoman Morgan. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, is there any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the next vote?
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
No.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries six to one. The floor is back open. Council.
Mr. President?
Vice President.
I think we've covered just about everything, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt the budget as of now.
Support.
We have support from Toy. The floor is yours, if you'd like it anymore.
I think we have said all about, that can be said at this point, so...
We did have a motion to learn more, or whatever it was.
Yeah.
Council, do we have anything further on the budget? Seeing none, anything from the audience? It's the budget, man. You got two minutes. You already lost 30 seconds.
Well, I just heard...
I'm just messing, no, you're good, you're two minutes.
...about the money tree and back the committee stuff. So we're talking about priority-based budgeting, PBB. I assume that you used to do line item, light item budgeting, I'm thinking, and just one of the disadvantages of PBB is subjective prioritization. And I think that made it clear when Jim said, public safety is now 63% of the budget, I think that's what you said. I remember when it was 30%, I remember when it was 50%, at that time, I said, wow, it's going to be 75% at some time. So I think it's, it behooves the council and the administration to start looking at technology and sustainability practices, to start bending that curve back the other way, because it is really going up very, very quickly. And subjective prioritization says, these are the, we're going to just put money into this, and it's a big culture change, and it's a culture change for all of your departments, and it's going to require data collection, data analysis, so I just hope that you'll consider that when you think about budgeting moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anything else from the audience? Seeing none. And then, Mr. Fisher, just to confirm, I mean, do I, do we have to announce the amendments, or is it just, they're already identified?
They're already identified.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote on the budget?
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the budget is passed, seven to zero. We do need to set the tax rates, correct? Or is that already included? I think that might have been included.
The tax rates are included as part of that motion.
Okay.
Yeah, it comes with an "and" and then...
I appreciate everybody in the audience, that was a Robert's, Robert's Rules chapter not even invented yet, so we figured it out, and we're going to move on to item number 11, which is part of our unfinished, it's meetings of the committee. This is our Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee meeting that took place October 2nd, and the subject matter of the 2022 Facility Condition Assessment and Space Needs Assessment. Councilman Donavich, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate it. On October 2nd, Wednesday, October 2nd, the Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee held a meeting, myself, the chairman, our member, Councilwoman Budzinski was there, as, along with Council President, Council President Morgan, Councilwoman Toy, city officials, the mayor, Maureen Brosnan was here, our city attorney, Mr. Fisher, our vice president was there, our finance director was there, Mr. Tormin, our Planning Economic Development Director was there, and a representative from Plant Moran Real Point, which is our real estate consultant. The meeting convened at 8:25. The mayor updated members of the council on the first 60 days of progress since the last committee meeting in regards to the Civic Center Campus progress. in regards to the Civic Center Campus Project. The administration has done a really good job on having a lot of input from the administration side of this to council. We've had a number and number of meetings on this, I've lost track at this point. Uh, the administration is continuing to bring the initial plans and concepts to the city council and they plan on having some more meetings before the end of the year. A Plant Moran Real Point representative gave council updates on workflow and future timelines. PMR, Plant Moran Real Point, is preparing a process and planning to go out to the community before the end of the year for a community survey. Uh, PMR is planning for the new city hall to completed, to be completed by 2027, that is an estimate. Uh, PMR is actively looking for additional funding sources and opportunities for the Civic Center Campus. Uh, there was a lot of discussion from PMR to continue to keep council updated for reporting and various updates to city council. They've done a great job in tandem with administration thus far, so I'm looking forward to that continued partnership. The city issued multiple bids to the public marketplace for various professional contracts for the Civic Center Campus. We'll be talking about those this evening as well in a separate item. The administration presented a proposed finance ordinance change for the procurement procedures directly related to the Civic Center Campus Project. Uh, this is a, a lot of information, you're going to hear us talk about it a lot, but I'm just going to kind of go through the talking points quickly through the notes. The purchasing procurement waiver would allow for the administration to approve bids under $100,000 only on the Civic Center Campus Project without going through the traditional steps of the city council. Right now, anything under, uh, $20,000, the council has an, the administration has an authority. Anything 20,000 and above has to go through a traditional process with the city council. So we're asking, the administration is asking for expenditures directly related to the future construction of the Civic Center Campus. That number would be increased to $100,000. So again, any of those contracts, uh, more than $100,000 would go through the traditional purchasing process through the city council. The council asked a lot of questions and asked for there to be some specific termination date and, or sunset provision for this waiver to end when the project is completed. Council's intent, and again, you'll hear more discussion as we go on, but council's intent at this committee meeting is for this waiver to expire and not go on in perpetuity. As some council members discussed that, you can kind of make the argument that you're always going to be updating something and we do not want that to be the case here. We just want this for the act of construction of, uh, certain phases of the Civic Center Campus Project and for this waiver to, to end at some point. The administration does believe this limited waiver to the ordinance will help move the project along quicker for smaller contracts. It is not their intent to remove council oversight, but rather be able to get this project done in a more condensed timeline. Uh, they will still continue to update council and provide council with reports, um, from the administration. So there'll still be a ton of reporting back and forth and the council, the administration doesn't expect there to be a lot of these contracts. Uh, you will see two contracts specifically this evening that were low dollar amounts that would, would, uh, be authorized under this waiver if it's approved or passed this evening, uh, but they're, they were smaller contracts and different types of vendors. This would only be allowed for the Civic Center Campus Project and no other normal day-to-day actions or normal transactions would be, would fall under this waiver. Council asked to include the termination of convenience clause to be included if council were to feel compelled, uh, to do so at any time. So if, um, if this was to be approved tonight, basically what that means is with the, with the vote of council, we could, uh, change this ordinance, remove this ordinance and go back to the traditional procurement ordinance. Uh, and then also, uh, this subject matter, the matter of the 2022 facility condition assessment and space needs assessment has run its course. Um, I myself as a chairman am recommending that a new motion be referred to the committee, uh, to continue to keep city council informed on the progress of the Civic Center Campus, which we did that at the last meeting. So there was a new motion, um, and there is new subject matter in this committee. So the administration, like I said, has done a good job of keeping council updated on this project and for future councils administrations to have the appropriate subject matter in that committee. So that did happen. Um, this meeting adjourned at 9:52. So the committee was recommending for the law department to draft a proposed finance ordinance to change for the procurement procedures directly related to the Civic Center Campus. And this item is, uh, no further action. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Donavich. Uh, I'll open it up to council.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion, uh, to approve the proposed amendment to the Levonia Code of Ordinances that the Department of Law has already drafted. I think that'd be a first reading, if I understand correctly. So I would like to offer a first reading for that. And then I, if I may, just a few comments.
Yep.
Um, as you kind of heard briefly in, in my committee notes, uh, the administration brought this to us and I'm okay with this. Um, naturally at first, first glance, I, I was paused. I, I don't like the idea of administration taking, taking away, as some people could categorize this, perceive this as taking away our oversight or our input on, on certain matters. But I don't see that being the case here. I think the administration has done a really great job on including council on just about every step of this, of this process. Um, what I see here is, is smaller contracts, change orders, things that need to happen very quickly. I think the administration, we should give them the authority to make those, uh, split second decisions sometimes. I think ultimately we'll end up saving money on this project as opposed to having to go out to bid for some of these smaller projects. We recently saw the two vendors for survey services and a traffic analysis. Those are not, and not to, to say they're not important, they are important. Every contract, every dollar we spend is important, uh, but they're, they're just not as significant, not as controversial issues. These are smaller things that I think the administration and, and their team, there's still a purchasing manager, there's still a finance department. There are still all the protections and procedures that a normal, uh, vendor would have to go through. I just think this gives the administration the tools and resources, resources to get stuff done quicker, to approve those change orders quicker. And if it's over $100,000, it will go to city council like normal. If the administration would have been asking for two, three, four hundred thousand, I would not be in support of this. But these are smaller contracts that may come. And to be quite honest with you, just candidly speaking, I don't think there's going to be a ton of these contracts that come up. I think there's going to be a few throughout the year, throughout the course of this project. Um, so I'm going to be okay with it, Mr. President. I'd like to note that if, if, uh, council ever feels something is, is awry, well, we through council action can remove this and go back through the traditional process. And then also I know that after some discussion with council members and administration, they did put a time, uh, sunset provision on this actual expiration date. So I think that, uh, it all makes sense. Um, and I do know that the administration, if this scenario does happen, they will send reports to the, to the council. So we'll know and be privy to anything that happens. So I'm okay with it, Mr. President. And, uh, it'd be interesting to see my colleagues, thank you.
Vice President?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, and. First read, okay. Um, I'm, I actually am in agreement as well. I take my fiscal responsibility here very seriously and I actually think this is a fiscally responsible move. Um, as Mr. Donavich pointed out, this is going to be for a very limited amount of contracts. We're looking at change orders, things that need to happen very quickly. Unfortunately, one of the bad wraps government gets is the red tape and how slow we have to move. And in this case, I think with expedience, we're actually going to be more fiscally responsible as we'll be able to take advantage of prices before they go up. Otherwise, something would have to come before us and it could be two months by the time it goes through a study and a regular and everything else. So that's one reason I will actually also be in support of this. And as Mr. Donavich had said, we can repeal this ordinance at any time. If we feel it's being abused for some reason or not being transparent enough, then we can absolutely come back and do that. Um, we did put a sunset on it of December 31st, 2027. The reason being is that our administration will change at that point and we wanted to make sure that we would be able to look at it before administration changes happen. So that, I just want to make sure that everyone understands why we're doing this and it's actually to be more, uh, expedient and not less. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything else from council? We do have a first read on the table. Uh, Councilwoman Budzinski.
Yes, um, I, I understand the spirit that this ordinance is being offered and I, and I do have confidence in, um, the administration's responsibly following through this ordinance. However, philosophically, I struggle with it because I think it's the role of city council to oversee spending in the city. I think it's what our job is and giving up part of our job just doesn't feel responsible to me. And it's something that I, I really struggle with making that make sense. Um, because it's hard to put the toothpaste back in the tube. Um, next year, we're going to have four new council members and I think having, you know, unique circumstances for, it, it's not just one singular project. It's not just the new city hall. It's any development that's happening on this five and Farmington campus. So it, it's pretty broad. Um, and I, and this is also, you know, I don't have experience with big development projects. Um, but we do have the senior center and rec center improvements happening down the street. And those, um, project budget items, they come to council, um, when they hit the threshold. And we haven't been inundated with requests. Um, you know, to, um, Councilman Donavich's point, he says he doesn't expect that this would come up very often, only a few times. And if it's only a couple of times, then I don't see why we would change our city ordinances, um, for just a couple of exceptions. You know, I, I know there are different ways that we can creatively move things along. Um, you know, we've, we've seen it happen when other things pop up that we need to do spending for. Um, and I feel like going into this project, you know, we don't have shovels in the ground yet. We, um, you know, are looking to line up the entities who are going to help us see this project to the finish line. And they'll understand the circumstances that they're working in and can plan accordingly to what those changes are. So, you know, for those reasons, I, I really struggle with this one and, and although I don't, um, I, I understand why my colleagues would be in support of this, um, I don't know that I can be.
Thank you. Anything else from council? We do have a first read, which, um, we'll take it to a second read potential and a vote next meeting on November 6th. Um, anything from the audience on this item? Seeing none, we're going to move on to item number 12, which is unfinished business. It's a request for council approval on a proposed lot split. This comes to us from the Department of Assessant for the parcels located north of Seven Mile Road and on the east side of Newburg Road in the southwest, uh, section, southwest quarter of section five. The addresses are 19316 and 195358 Newburg Road and waived the lot minimum, uh, width, oh wait, and waived the minimum lot width for the proposed parcel F. Counsel?
So moved.
Support. Motion from Toy, support from Donavich. Anything further from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. The motion carries seven to zero. Moving on to item number 13 is an award of contract. This comes to us from the Department of Public Works for the 2024 through 27 calendar year requirements for the portable toilet program to provide portable toilet service from budgeted funds. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilman Jolly?
I would be happy to offer an approving.
You got it. We got support from Morgan. Any further communication, Council, uh, Vice President?
Thank you. Um, and I believe Mr. Moore is here, so I'm going to ask him to come to the podium because I just have a couple of questions about this. I'll give him a second.
Evening, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, so I actually had this go on to the regular instead of the consent last time because I know it said that we were getting porta potties and also some handicap accessible porta potties. But we wanted to make sure that we had the ADA accessible porta potties, which are wheelchair accessible. And I appreciate Mr. Moore coming back to us with that information. Um, because now, I think people don't realize, and I didn't realize, that handicapped ones aren't necessarily ADA, not all handicap. When they say handicap on them, are ADA compliant or wheelchair accessible. Um, so our wheelchair, using residents need to be able to get their wheelchair in. They need to maybe be able to turn 360 degrees around when they're in there, no ramp, zero entry, all of that. And I appreciate you coming back to us with, with that specification. Um, the one thing today, I just wanted to make sure, it didn't say that we were going to be at all parks. Um, some parks only have a singular unit. What I was hoping for, if that's, we have to only have a singular unit at a park, it can be the accessible unit. So, and that's, and that's, that's really the only thing I wanted to make sure that we were clear on. Um, but I do appreciate all the work you put into it and I wanted to thank you for that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything further from council?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Toy?
I'd like to commend my colleague, uh, Martha for bringing this up. It's, it's very insightful. Um, and, you know, with an aging population, including myself, here in this community, um, it becomes very important for those folks, um, you know, almost as much as the parking, you know, situations and all the kinds of things we see for the, um, physically challenged people. So thank you, Martha, for bringing this up, appreciate it.
Anything further from council? Anything from the audience? You got two minutes.
I don't think I need that long. Cindy Fleming, Woodring and Levonia. I'd like to, uh, thank Councilwoman Patachnik and the city for considering fully accessible porta potties. Um, it makes the difference in quality of life for so many people. And I'm speaking from, as being a former disability specialist with Head Start and Early Head Start. We need to be all inclusive. You saw the gentleman earlier who tried to speak. It's very difficult to get by and I would think his name was Mr. Moon, but just coming down here with a wheelchair. So if you have to take care of personal needs, you should be treated like everyone else and have accessible facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, moving on to item number 14 is a waiver petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission, petition 2024-06-02-10 submitted by Wanda Massage Institute, requesting waiver use approval to operate a massage establishment at 37625 Ann Arbor Road, located on the south side of Ann Arbor Road between Newburg and Ann Arbor Trail. Um, this was denied by the Planning Commission on July 16th, 2024 and appealed at a public hearing held on October 2nd, 2024. Counsel?
Yes.
Offered a denying.
We've been denying due to support.
Support.
Support from Vice President.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to support that denying for a number of reasons. The petitioner has failed to comply with all the general standards and requirements outlined in, uh, sections of our zoning ordinance. Uh, the proposed use fails to comply with the zoning ordinance standard outlined in multiple portions of our ordinance, which specifies that no massage establishments shall be located within 400 feet of a public park. Uh, the petitioner has not adequately established a need for the proposed use in this neighborhood. The petitioner has not sufficiently demonstrated that the proposed use would be compatible with and in harmony with the surrounding uses in the area. Uh, the proposed use is contrary to the goals and objectives of the zoning ordinance, which among other things are intended to ensure the sustainability and appropriateness of the uses. Um, and in addition to that, uh, there was some new data given to us by our clerk's office. The owner of the property owes more than $60,000 in back taxes on the property and thousands of dollars in unpaid water bills. Uh, I would like to note that they did make a small payment, uh, but again, there's more than $60,000 owed in back taxes on the building and a few thousand dollars owed in the water bill for some of those reasons, I'll be, uh, in support of the denying.
Thank you, Councilman Donavich. Anybody else from council? Um, is a petitioner here? Um, would, would, would the petitioner like to speak? You don't have to, but if you'd like to, um, before I open it up to the audience for communication? Good evening. Like I said, you don't have to, but I just wanted to make sure before we go for the vote, that if you'd like to say anything, you, you have a chance.
Uh, yes, because the last time we actually, uh, talking about, uh, we were not open to the public for the massage services at all. So we are trying to, uh, uh, because you mentioned about the zoning problem, so we decide to, uh, change our strategy, uh, business strategy to able to align with the zone code. So as a school, that's our, uh, questioning about if we are just only, uh, perform as a school, is it, is that, uh, going to be aligned with, uh, the city rule and the zoning rules?
I, I, yes, we, we, I can't give you legal advice. If you would like to, then you can, I mean, obviously on this matter, if you'd like to go through the whole entire process, I think you could do so. But this is right now, everything's in front, in front of us based on this motion.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you. Any audience communication? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote on the denial?
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough? President McCullough.
Aye. And the denial is upheld, seven to zero. We are now going to move on to new business. Item number 15 is a request for an additional expenditure. It comes to us from the Engineering Division for the 2023 Concrete Road Program Contract 23-C. Mr. Zalinsik.
Thank you, Council President. Council members, again, I'll just be brief. Looking to close out the contract, transfer funding in the amount of $55,917.82. In addition, also pay AW for their services based on the final contract amount, in the amount of $6,710. Be happy to answer any questions and again, looking to close out the project from 23. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Morgan, support by Toy. Anything else from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donovic.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. Motion carries seven to zero. We're going to move on to item number 16 under new business. Is a request to authorize an additional appropriation and expenditure. Comes to us from the Engineering Division for the 2024 Concrete Maintenance/Selective Slab Program, Contract 24-J. Mr. Zalinsik.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We got a motion. Do we support?
Support.
For sake of discussion. Mr. Zalinsik.
Yes, thank you. Just let you know, as you know, next year we have the old M14 project going on Sheldon to Newburgh Road. This allowed me to do some patching on West Brown School Craft between Levan in front of Madonna University to the off-ramp, knowing that there'll be some traffic backup. So again, transferring different funds, looking for approval to close out the contract with Great Lake Solutions and also pay AW in the amount of $15,297 for their CE services for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinsik. Will we have a motion? Counsel, do you have anything further? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donovic.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the item carries seven to zero.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you. Do a support.
Second.
Support from Jolly. Counsel, any comment on that for suspending the rules to speak on this item? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote to suspend the rules?
Councilmember Donovic.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. The item carries seven to zero. The X item is our Capital Outland Infrastructure Committee meeting that was held on October 14th, 2024, the subject matter of planning, design, and construction of the new Civic Center campus. I will say that normally we don't like doing X items, but we got to get the party started, should we say. Literally, I'm going to hand it over to Councilman Donovic for some exciting, exciting items.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do appreciate your help on this, Mr. President, a lot. I'm the committee chairman of the Capital Outland Infrastructure Committee and trying to get the notes from the meeting we just had last week through the City Hall steps. So unfortunately, we had to X item this, but I do appreciate you, Mr. President, for getting this on the agenda. Counsel's received a ton of information on this item. There's multiple motions. To be transparent, I want to go through all of them, so it is dense. There's a lot of information on here, but it's important that we talk about this. October 14th at City Hall, 7:00 PM, we had a Capital Outland Infrastructure Committee meeting. Myself, the chairman, was present, our vice chairman, Jim Jolly, and our member, Councilwoman Budzinski, was there, along with our council president, Mr. McCullough, Councilman Scott Morgan, Councilwoman Laura Toy, and our vice president, Councilwoman Tashnik. The mayor, Browson, was there, our city attorney, chief of staff, finance director, planning, economic development director, both our city engineer and our deputy city engineer, and multiple representatives from Plant Moran Rio Point. I'd like to note that those representatives are here this evening, with a number of the vendor representatives are here as well. This meeting convened at 7:02 PM. The mayor started off the meeting giving counsel an update on the Civic Center campus project and the recent interviews of key partners in professional services contracts. Plant Moran Rio Point, I'll refer to them as PNR, PMR, on behalf of the city explained the bids that went out to the public. Multiple public bids went out for professional services. The administration is ultimately recommending companies HED for master planning services for the entire site, OHM for civil engineering of the entire site, and when I say site, the entire Civic Center campus, HED for architectural and engineering services for City Hall specifically, and Spalding D Decker for the survey services and traffic study services for the entire site here at Five Mile and Farmington. The project team, made up of city staff and PMR, conducted pre-proposal meetings with dozens of local and national firms for the above professional services that were all publicly bid. The traffic study will go out a mile in each direction from Five Mile and Farmington and is an initial study of the current traffic flows and patterns to gather baseline data for this area. PMR explained that the project team creates the master plan. The traffic study vendor will conduct another study or multiple studies to analyze the impact of traffic flow as the project proceeds. There was considerable discussion about the future of Five Mile and Farmington roads intersection and that the six lanes of roadway in each direction should be considered for changes to the number of lanes and the flow of future traffic as this project proceeds. Some mentioned that these lanes and this intersection would need to be altered to capture the true identity of a downtown area with walkability and safer access to pedestrian foot traffic for the success of the future Civic Center campus. But most importantly, the safety of our pedestrians walking, running, biking, shopping, and living. So there was a lot of discussion about that, and there will be more discussion about the intersection of Five Mile and Farmington and what those lanes of traffic will look like in the future. Multiple bids on the traffic study contract, there were multiple bids in the traffic study contract. Administration is recommending the contract be awarded to Spalding D Decker in the amount of $17,700. This is under the $20,000 threshold, that city council, the city council purchasing threshold, so doesn't necessarily need to come to council vote. The vendor, Spalding D Decker, is part of the city's already pre-approved qualified bidders, and our engineering department works with them a lot on different items. The next item was for the survey services for the entire Civic Center campus. Multiple companies publicly bid on the survey services professional contract. The survey helps the master planners, architects, and engineers determine where underground utilities are, helps determine where the boundary lines are, and determine the topographical layout of the entire site. Multiple firms did bid on the survey services contract. The administration is recommending the contract be awarded to Spalding D Decker in the amount of $67,750. The vendor, Spalding D Decker, is a part of the city's already pre-approved bidders, and our engineering department also works with them as a vendor. The next item was for civic engineering, civil engineering firms for the entire Civic Center campus. Multiple firms also publicly bid on the civil engineering work. They were interviewed by a panel of city staff and PMR. OHM talked about the future of Five Mile and Farmington roads intersection. They work with Wayne County, who owns the roads, to rework, to potentially rework these intersections, boulevards, and thoroughfares. They are very experienced with roads and dealing with county authorities, and they have a lot of experience in other municipalities doing so. They work, they look for ways to say yes as opposed to saying no. They work on stormwater sewers, various utility services. They work on pedestrian walkways to keep the residents safe and help with layouts to building in conjunction with our city engineering department and other professional services. PMR explained the going rate is 5% to 15% for civil engineering services of projects of the scope. OHM is 6.5%. The final price is not known yet. PMR explained that the city can change to a fixed fee structure opposed to percentage base if determined to be best for us at another time, so that will continue to be discussed as time goes on. Multiple firms bid on the civil engineering services contract. The administration is ultimately recommending the contract be awarded to OHM. This vendor, OHM, is also a part of the city's already pre-qualified bidders, and our engineering department works with this vendor often. I'd like to note that OHM worked with the city on the creation of Livonia Vision 21 Master Plans. They have a lot of intimate experience on this project. The next item was for master planning firms for the entire Civic Center campus. Multiple firms bid on the master planning work. They were interviewed by a panel of city staff and PMR. HED does a lot of local work, but is also national, so they have a vast experience and creative abilities. HED is bringing on a subconsultant to assist with this work. Design work is also experienced, that's the company, their subconsultant, design work, and they are experienced on a national scale and do a lot of work in neighborhood communities like Livonia. There was a focus on this project being economically realistic and feasible in the marketplace. There was a very thorough scope of work, focused on the discovery and focal points of our community and identity. They helped set a realistic tone for this project and have worked with other cities in Michigan. HED will begin working on renderings and plan to bring multiple plans to the city council in April of 2025. There will be input from the community and council at multiple points. Multiple firms bid on the master planning services contract. The administration is recommending the contract be awarded to HED for $345,000. HED is, was also selected by the panel for architectural and engineering services for the design of City Hall specifically. Multiple firms publicly bid on the architectural and engineering services as well. This would specifically be for City Hall. HED would analyze the space needs assessment conducted by PMR over the last few years to design the City Hall. HED has multiple divisions and bandwidth to do this type of work, master planning work for the campus and architectural work for engineering of City Hall. Counsel talked about this project price being under control and not being too expensive. Keeping this building under controlled budget is very important to the council, and this building isn't just an office building, but it's the people's house. And having a council chambers for council to meet with residents and provide space for the residents to have their voices heard is of the utmost importance to this city council. HED Architectural is very creative and listens to what our city wants. They recently worked with Redford Township to design some of their newer municipal buildings. HED should be bringing council some renderings in the summer or fall, summer to fall of 2025, hopefully breaking ground in 2025 or early 2026. The funds for these above contracts would come from the 418 Fund, the Building Improvement Fund, which we have a sufficient amount of money in that fund right now, so this fund would cover these expenditures. Bond dollars would cover these professional services expenditures that are coming from the 418 Fund, and that fund would be reimbursed if a bond was approved sometime in 2025. The bond proposal will come back to the council in the summer of 2025. All of these bids and documents are included in the packet and available to the public. Counsel explained to the administration and the mayor it is important to continue to have committee meetings, keeping the city council updated on the status of the Civic Center campus project. As I've said before, the administration has done a good job thus far, and they should continue to do that good of a job. Councilman Jim Jolly did recommend those approving resolutions. The meeting adjourned at 8:27 PM. The committee is recommending that the law department draft the following resolutions for the Civic Center campus for survey services, master planning services, civil engineering services, and City Hall architectural services. This item will remain in the committee, and just for the sake of our notes, the subject matter is planning, design, and construction of the new Civic Center campus. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for that thorough. I mean, honestly, I know he's been, Councilman Donovic spent a very long time on that, but listen, this is probably one of the biggest, I know we're getting used to saying these are some of the biggest motions and items that we have, but it truly is. I mean, this is transforming our city into the future. So I'm going to hand it over to Councilman Jolly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer an approving motion for each of those at this time.
Support.
Thank you, Ms. Toy.
You're welcome.
So simply said, this is putting the right people in the right places with the right skill sets to set up the city to thrive for the next 50 years. We have a lot riding on this project as a city and a community in terms of what our future hopes and, you know, best and well-informed decisions are going to be going forward with this. I commend the city and Plant Moran Rio Point in regards to the effort that they've put through. I, you know, excuse me. We have a lot of local vendors who we are very familiar with, who do great work, and I'm glad to see that those people are involved in this project going forward. It seems only right that these people would be involved in this monumental project for the city as well. But I'm particularly happy with the selection and the recommendation of HEC for the master planning services and architectural services for the new City Hall. And, you know, I think we heard a little bit earlier tonight in regards to the value that architecture has in our community and how it's kind of a timestamp for what was going on at a particular time and place. We are currently in a city hall that reflected a different time, and it is something that at one point in time was viewed as a marvel of the community and something that people bragged about. And I'm very comfortable with HEC, that this is going to be a project in a city hall that will be reflective of us not only just being the great community that we are, but striving to be an excellent community going forward and having this be the focal point of the community. So I think it's great and happy to offer the motion to approve it and get this project one step further. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Seeing none. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I wanted to just take a moment because, as you indicated, this is another one of those monumental times, monumental votes that are coming before the council. So we do want to step back and make sure that we give it our due reflection. And Councilman Donovic, I want to commend you for your thoroughness in your report, but more importantly, for the robust number of meetings that you've hosted to get us to this point. And you requested that that not stop. I can tell you that it will not stop. We are on what I refer to as a pants-on-fire pace around here, moving as fast as we possibly can to make sure that we're able to capture all of the energy and your understanding of the importance of this project and moving it forward for our residents. You know, back in 2017, Livonia residents began to dream really big about what could happen in their community when we asked them to engage in the Livonia Vision 21 process. Tonight is a culmination of you understanding all of those dreams, you now selecting dreamers and visionaries that are going to help us to reach even further. As Councilman Jolly noted, this building is one that when it was developed, when it was created, it was iconic. And it has withstood the test of its time, but its time has now passed. It is so far past that when we began to interview the firms like HED and many of the other firms that came before us, we did not interview them in this building. And we talked to them specifically about why. Because we wouldn't want anybody to think that our dream for the future of City Hall, that our dream for the future of the Livonia City Center property is just a step above where we are now. We imagine ourselves going light years beyond where we are now. So we took them to a brighter spot in Livonia. Masco, one of our larger community partners, was kind enough to allow us to use their space. It's bright, it's promising, it stimulates new ideas and creativity, and that's what we want to bring to this project. And that's what I'm ever so grateful to all of you for doing, for bringing your commitment to that brightness, to that authenticity, to who and what we are in Livonia. HED understands that, and I want to speak directly to that contract tonight because that really is the contract that's going to take us to that next most creative step in envisioning where we can head as our city moves forward. Some of the things that attracted us about the HED proposal were that they looked at wanting to advance a lot of the stakeholder groups that we already had, looking at all of that information, but then going back to stakeholders and once again, touching base, checking in, making sure that those things that are most authentic to our community are going to be reflected in the city center that we're about to develop. Those things like a safe community, safety first, those things like a community that is rooted in neighborhood, that is rooted in just that sense of friendliness and understanding of who we are in Livonia. They were very innovative when it came to looking at the environmental sustainability of the site. You know, oftentimes when you're talking to developers, you need to add that as a bonus layer when you're talking to architects and engineers about where you want your city to add. In this case, HED was there first. They talked to us about that being a very base by which they begin their development ideas, the base by which they begin their architectural and engineering visions. visions. So we were committed to the understanding that we were all on the same page with that one. The third thing that they really sparked our attention with was their deliberation in trying to understand where it was that economically we want this city center to take us. This is more than just moving building blocks around on this 27-acre-plus parcel of property. This is about how we use this land to make sure that we advance the economic future of our city, so that we are taking care not only of those who live here now and the seniors that are aging in place in our community, but so that we're a place that attracts young people and that young vitality and that future to our city. So understanding that economic development component was critical to our selection of HED. They understood our need to put bikeways, walkways, and pathways into the program, making sure that we are connected all the way from Silver Village all the way over to the rec center and the senior center that we're building right now. They understood that future, as Mr. Donavich describes it, takes a look at the road system that's serving this area, that while that road system exists in its current configuration, our dreams may go beyond that. They very well could and should go beyond that. So we're grateful to you for engaging in this process with it, with us. I especially want to thank members of the administrative team, Dave Varga, Mark Chiramina, Debbie Lichtenberg, and Carter Fisher, who were part of the core team that conducted many of the interviews. We also had Dave Lear from the Engineering Department who stepped in at one point, and we had Janine Libel, who stepped in from our HR department to talk about the new City Hall development. We also had with us Councilman Donavich and Council President McCullough for various interviews along the way, and I want to thank you for your additional time and commitment to this process as well. Plant Moran, Real Point, though, was the, was the lead dog in all of this. They worked really hard in advance of this entire process to make sure that the nation's leading bright minds, the nation's leading visionaries bid on this project. This was a project that has been talked about all over the country. We've selected a national firm to come in that has a very strong connection to projects in this area, but they have a project out in Salina, Texas, that looks an awful lot like what we're trying to do here. So they've worked in a lot of different environments, and we do believe that it's that breadth of experience that's going to make HED help us to realize our dreams. So we've got some other tried and true contractors that are going to be joining us on this project with OHM and Spalding D. Decker. But for all of us, the new player and the partner that we're going to want to get to know quickly is going to be our partner's HED. Tracy Sweeney is here. She's a lead, project lead and project manager. She's joining us, and we also have PMR as well. And if you don't mind, I would like to turn it over to Plant Moran, Real Point, so they can share with you just a little bit more background.
Thank you, Mayor. I need to stop following you as a habit because you said pretty much all of it between the overview that Councilman Donavich gave and your passion. I don't think there's a lot more to add other than maybe just hit a couple points, which is this really was a team effort, and I really do appreciate all the input from counsel in participating in interviews, the Engineering Department, Legal Department, Procurement Department, the mayor's office, and all of their staff. Really, this couldn't have been done without the whole team rowing in the same direction. We had, as the mayor mentioned, over 50 firms, national firms, some of the biggest firms in the world, all the way down to some local firms, had over 30 proposals with extremely competitive fees. Really, a lot of really talented individuals were interested in this program. And we're very excited tonight to have a couple of them here with us. As the mayor mentioned, we have Tracy Sweeney from HED. We also have Rhett Gronvold and Kirk Lovell from OHM here this evening. If there's time, I'm sure they'd love to say a couple of words, but really could not be more pleased. This is a big inflection point for us to get moving and start designing and start visioning and imagining what the campus will look like. So happy to answer any questions if there's any left, so.
I think we're probably pretty good, especially where we're at in the night. Not to discount anything, but we do have, I believe, an approving on the table. We've already, if counsel has anything else. I'm planning to go to the audience and then get you guys a couple of, hopefully, we get some approving contracts and you guys can proceed.
Sounds great.
Anything from the audience based on?
Yeah, just mentioned that the project, yeah. Just a couple of things real quick. Great to see City Center going forward. Been talking about it for 20 years, so I just wanted to push back a little bit on this facility. I hope whoever built this is not involved going forward. When this was built, it was not state-of-the-art. I remember it was mock for the backward City Hall that it is, and they did a horrible job incorporating old with new. The, the way it's built, and the roof has leaked from probably since the first year or so. Just wanted to put that forward. But this project is gigantic and it's fantastic, and I'm hoping, I think you've got to pass bonds, right, to make it go, I'm pretty sure. So I hope as much effort's going into the project will be going into getting those bonds passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anything else from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the, the item passes seven to zero. And with that, that will conclude our regular agenda. Is there any audience communication for items that are not on the agenda or the next?
Yeah, a couple of meetings ago, it came public that one of the utilities was doing underground work. I think they busted our water main, so we did an emergency fix with our contractor. And someone came forward and said, instead of waiting on insurance, we want to pay these guys. They did the work. And I thought, I was wondering why didn't we apply that thinking to Rotary Park? Rotary Park was damaged, should have been fixed immediately for safety reasons, as well as all the things that were booked there. There's all these things booked to use that pavilion, and then settled up with insurance later. And when we're speaking about insurance, I thought the city was self-insured, so I don't know why, why there would be a problem with insurance of any kind. Last thing I want to leave with you, I always hear what a great job the Housing Commission's doing, and just put this out there, if the Housing Commission's doing so good, why do we get $50,000 from the state of Michigan and another person to help us with housing?
Thank you, Mr. King. Good evening, sir.
Hello.
Name an address for the record, and you've got three minutes.
Yeah, Allen Dix, 35415 Almira. Well, I wish I didn't have to come to speak with you right now. You may recall a few weeks ago, early September, I was here in front of you. And I presented information regarding some election law violations, and per the City Council, your request, sent you some packets of information. And with all due respect to, you know, expressed disappointment that not a single person from council, mayor's office, or attorney's office followed up to any of the information that I had sent. That contained information, facts, specific state laws, chronology, and photo evidence of the issue. So I'm not really here to talk about that. Unfortunately, at that meeting, contrary to your own audience rules to not make slanderous statements, when given an opportunity to speak about those claims that I presented, I was slandered. And I was accused of violating election laws, and that is the reason why I was released from working for 10 years on Livonia elections, and that is untrue. But there was no open audience communication that I was aware of to rebut that, and I provided some rebuttal to that in my packet to each of you. Since I was slandered in this forum, I would like the public retraction and apology in this forum, or let the facts come out. So I attended on October 11, just a week and a half ago, the Election Commission meeting with the clerk, attorney, mayor. Said, what laws did I violate? Clerk had an opportunity to express what those were and acknowledge there were none, and said she would think about speaking at this meeting to provide that retraction. Fortunately, when she had the floor and spoke about election matters, she didn't do that, and left me no choice but to come up here and ask. So I'd like to ask you, clerk, if you'd like to address that. If not, it's up to you. But, you know, as I am an experienced election worker, professional researcher, it's important to me. I continue to work on elections, wish to continue, so the slanderous statements can impact my name and reputation. So I'm here to defend myself, and otherwise I may be left with no other, you know, with other remedies at my disposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for audience communication? Seeing none?
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sure you have support on that, but.
Support.
We'll see everybody at 9:10.
He showed seven before he did that.
I did. Listen, I, I think everybody was there.